Hi, everyone. I know you don't get to see each other very much anymore these days, but hopefully this is one of many new opportunities to get back together and really feel what's great about being at our community. So I am Carl Lejway. I'm a professor in psychological sciences and the provost at the university. Some of you have only seen me in a box, and that's been for two years. And I'm always sorry about that. But again, opportunities like this are a chance for us to really get back together as a community. And so when you want to get back together as a community, there are certain events that are particularly special to do it with. And it's my pleasure to welcome everyone here this afternoon. Although it seems obvious, we can't say it enough. We have outstanding faculty at this university, and they are such a crucial part of what makes UConn a great place. And before we begin to appreciate several of our great faculty, I just want a round of applause for all of our faculty. And I can't talk about great faculty with also making sure that we acknowledge our amazing staff at the university who are here today, too. But, you know, because we never do this, today we're going to focus on faculty. The hard work of our faculty is researchers and creators, educators, community leaders. It's so central to our mission at UConn. And while none of our faculty members do what they do for accolades or awards, it is important that we recognize their contributions to society and to our community. That's why it is such a privilege for me today to be able to confer the university's highest honor on five exceptionally talented members of our faculty. Their commitment to scholarship is an example of who they are as colleagues and what they are as an inspiration to each of us and particularly to their students. They are renowned for their contributions across a wide range of fields and for the diversity and impact of their scholarly interests. They've also distinguished themselves for their leadership and for their dedication to the university. And we are extremely fortunate they call UConn home. Before we honor each of them, I want to thank members of the Board of Trustees who have joined us today. I would especially like to thank Dr. Philip Rubin, who, by the way, is, and I'm going to embarrass him, and I know he doesn't want me to do this, but could you really imagine a better member of the Board of Trustees to be here to honor our distinguished faculty? Someone who has had such an illustrious research career. It is really an honor for me to have you here with us today. Yes, well, of course. So let's begin. So, Dr. Rubin, if you'll move to the medal table, which you have done. The first of this year's honorees is Ming Hui Chen. Dr. Chen, please step forward. Dr. Chen is a professor and department head of statistics in the College of Liberal Arts and Sciences. He was elected as a fellow of the American Statistical Association in 2005. This is a long list here. A fellow of the Institute of Mathematical Statistics in 2007 and a fellow of the International Society for Bayesian Analysis in 2016. He received the International Chinese Statisticians Association Distinguished Award, Achievement Award, in 2020. He's published, this must be a typo, because it says you've published over 435 peer-reviewed articles, five books, and actually, this one is probably the most impressive. Over 200 colloquia or invited talks nationally and internationally. And I'm sure the one that means most to you, you've supervised almost 40 PhD students. His service to the profession includes president of the International Chinese Statisticians Association, president of the New England Statistical Society, 2022 Joint Statistical Meeting Program Chair, co-editor-in-chief of Statistics and ITS Interface, and inaugurated, excuse me, co-editor-in-chief of the New England Journal of Statistics and Data Science. So, Dr. Chen, we'd like you to come up and say a few words about your research and kind of what UConn means to you. Oh, wait, I'm sorry, I went out of order. I always get it right on Zoom, but, you know, it's a little harder.
Okay. Yeah, so I'm really honored to receive the BOT distinguished professor award. And first of all, I would like to thank another BOT distinguished professor, Deepak De, who hired me in 2001 for nominating me for this award. So secondly, I would like to thank my distinguished peer scholars for writing the supporting letters. And so I would like to thank the award committee for selecting me. First, I would like to thank all of my collaborators. If I add all together, it could be more than 1,000 people. So that's most proud of my part. And both outside and inside of UConn for supporting me and working with me over the last 30-plus years. And fifth, I really would like to thank all of my PhD students and my postdocs for their contribution to my research. And I really enjoyed working with all of them. So without them, I cannot achieve this, such achievement. And sixth, I would like to thank all of the faculty in the Department of Statistics for their support and encouragement over the last 21 years. So finally, I would like to thank my family. So my wife was here today, and my two lovely daughters, and my parents for their unconditional support over my entire life. And I will continuously do my best to make my contribution to statistics at a university connected. So the place I love to work, so thanks all again.
Our next honoree is Dr. Marja Hurley. Dr. Hurley is a tenured professor of medicine and orthopedic surgery at UConn Health. She has received numerous awards for her research and STEM diversity initiatives, including the Lawrence G. Race Award for Translational Research from the American Society for Bone and Mineral Research, the first New England Board of Higher Education Award for Innovation in Education, the Connecticut Technology Council Women of Innovation and Leadership Award, and the Carol N. Ray Niag Medal of Honor. If that wasn't impressive enough, the Society of Osteobiology and UConn have also named Dr. Hurley as one of its most outstanding women in 100 years and awarded her the first Martin Luther King Award for Achievement in Science. She has garnered more than $30 million to support her research and educational initiatives at UConn Health, where she's been nationally recognized for developing the UConn Health-Etna Health Professions Partnership STEM Initiative that has resulted in hundreds, hundreds of first-generation and underrepresented students matriculating in health profession schools. And really, quite frankly, what, you know, as a scholar, she is truly amazing. But what she has done to support students, to give them voice, to give them a sense of what's possible for them, you really can't, you can't say it enough.
Members of the Board of Trustees, President Merrick, Provost Lejway, Vice Provost Bradford, fellow honorees, colleagues, family, and friends. I'm deeply honored to have received this recognition and would like to thank my colleagues and nominators, Professor Lisa Kuhn, Professor Barry Adamarion, and Professor Lenworth Ellis. I would also like to thank my international and national colleagues at the University of London, Washington University, Indiana University School of Medicine, Icahn School of Medicine, Dean Emeritus Howard University School of Dental Medicine, who wrote in support of my nomination. I would also, at this time, acknowledge the support and encouragement of my spouse, Dr. John Hurley, with whom I have been on this incredible journey since college in three countries, Jamaica, England, and the United States. Since this award is based on demonstrated excellence in teaching, research, and service outreach and public engagement, we were encouraged to comment on an area or combination that had particularly meaning for us. As I reflect on my academic journey, it is difficult to cite only one area, since I have served as a clinician involved in patient care, teaching medical students, residents, and fellows, and found this to be quite fulfilling. Although my specialty involved the care of patients with many chronic disorders, it was gratifying that some could be cured or treated to have a normal quality of life. At the start of my academic career, in addition to patient care and teaching, I became the associate dean for minority student affairs at UConn Health and sought to promote diversity in the medical and dental student body, which did not exist. A meaningful moment was the recognition that this initiative that began 25 years ago has resulted in more than 700 first-generation and underrepresented students matriculating in health profession schools. National recognition by the Association of American Medical Colleges, who invited me to testify before Congress about the success of UConn Health Career Opportunity Programs, was a major highlight. My nomination by former medical school dean Peter Deckers and my receiving the first New England Board of Higher Education Award for Innovation in Medical Education with the late Senator Ted Kennedy was extremely gratifying. A most recent highlight was virtual mentoring and reunion of the alumni of the Etna Health Professions High School Doctors Academy, in which I participated this past Saturday. I was beaming from ear to ear as I wandered from the virtual, one virtual room to the next as medical, dental, nursing, pharmacy, biomedical engineering alums of the High School Doctors Academy interacted with current eighth-to-12th grade students in the academy, emphasizing the importance of mentoring, discipline, goal-setting, academics, and sharing with them how their participation as middle and high school students impacted their academic journey and career choices. At the start of my academic career, I was also determined to be a physician-research scientist from the bedside to the bench and back to understand at the molecular level the genetic basis of osteoporosis. A major highlight was receiving my first NIH R01 and the more than 25 years of NIH support for my laboratory and the more than 50 undergraduate medical, dental, master, doctoral, and postdoctoral fellows who have conducted research in my laboratory, as well as the international and national recognition that my research has garnered. My election as chair of a Gordon Conference and receiving the American Society of Bone and Mineral Research most prestigious Lawrence G. Royce Award are major highlights of my research career. I've also had the opportunity to serve as a member of the senior administration at UConn Health, and I was really gratified to serve as the interim senior associate dean for Academic Affairs and Education and liaison to the UConn Health Board of Directors for LCMU reaccreditation of the medical school. Last but not least, I would like to thank my colleagues and staff in the associate dean's office. Some of them have worked for me, and this is a state facility, for more than 25 years, for their dedication and support of the Health Career Opportunity Programs. Thank you all for this incredible recognition.
Our next honoree is Leslie Lo. Dr. Lo, will you please step forward? Leslie Lo joined the UConn School of Medicine in 1984 and was given the Boehringer Ingelheim Chair in Cell Science in 2007. He founded the Richard D. Berlin Center for Cell Analysis and Modeling in 1993 and led it for 27 years. During that time, the center grew to 15 faculty doing research in microscope imaging, mathematical modeling of cell functioning, and is also home to a new graduate program in systems biology. Dr. Lo is best known outside of UConn for leading the Virtual Cell Project, which has been supported with over $50 million in NIH grants. He's also invented fluorescent dyes that can be used to image patterns of electrical activity in the brain and in the heart. With two colleagues, he recently founded a company to market these dyes. In 2012, he was selected as the editor-in-chief of Biophysical Journal. For this and many other volunteer activities, he received the Distinguished Service Award of the Biophysical Society in 2018.
Dear friends, I'm sure I share the sentiments of the other honorees today in considering this distinguished distinction to be a capstone for our careers at UConn. And it really is. We've all invested so much in this institution, and it has reciprocated manyfold in supporting our careers. So yes, this is a fitting capstone. But it certainly doesn't mean we are done. Just consider our fellow honoree, Dr. Merrick. Not long after receiving this honor, she went on to even greater heights at this wonderful institution. This certainly inspires me not to rest on my laurels. But be assured, Dr. Merrick, I won't be going after your new job. An occasion like this is really all about just expressing gratitude. Firstly, of course, thank you to the Board of Trustees for this meaningful honor and for all that you do to assure that UConn continues to prosper. Thank you to Dean Bruce Liang, who understands the importance of research and has been amazingly supportive of basic research in the School of Medicine. I am so grateful to all my wonderful colleagues and wonderful students who collaborated with me as I built my career at UConn. I am especially grateful to Anne Cowan and Yan Muraru. Yan is here today, but Anne was delayed in her flight back from Minnesota, where she was cheering on our Huskies. For the last 25-plus years, Anne and Yan have been extraordinarily close collaborators. Actually, it would be better to describe them as my partners. And thanks to Pedro Mendez, who also made the trek from Farmington. Only his second visit to stores, by the way. He took over from me as director of the Berlin Center for Cell Analysis and Modeling two years ago and leaves me confident that it will continue to flourish as it moves in exciting new directions under his leadership. I must specifically acknowledge my administrator, Karen Zucker. Her dedication and patience in dealing with eccentric scientists for almost 30 years has been truly amazing. Last but certainly not least, thanks to my wife, Helen. She tolerated all the long hours at work and endured the all-nighters before grant deadlines. She has been a constant source of love, support, and friendship during our 52 years of marriage. Thank you all so much.
Hopefully, you're not thinking about provost either. So just wanted to put that out there. So next, we have Dr. Richard Wilson. Will you please come forward? Richard A. Wilson is the Gladstein Chair of Human Rights, a professor of law and anthropology, and the associate dean for faculty development and intellectual life at the UConn Law School. He is currently a member of the Hate Crimes Advisory Council of the State. He's a scholar of human rights and transitional justice who teaches courses on law and society, post-conflict justice, and an interdisciplinary graduate-level course on, a few here, anthropology, history, law, and philosophy of human rights. That's a class I definitely would like to take. He's the author of four books and over 50 articles on international human rights, truth and reconciliation, excuse me, truth and reconciliation commissions, and international criminal tribunals. Dr. Wilson is also the founding director of UConn's Human Rights Institute, serving for 10 years as director, during which time the institute hired 10 faculty, held several international conferences, and launched an undergraduate human rights major and a graduate certificate in human rights. And an institute that you honestly can't go a few days here at UConn without hearing about how important it is, what it means for society, and what it means for our students. As you can see, is truly committed to engaged scholarship and seeks to create a more equitable and inclusive world.
I absolutely not prepared any remarks at all. So I'm opening my mouth, not knowing what's coming out next. But I think I should start with thanking the provost's office for this award. I'd like to thank also Dean Ebony Nelson of the Law School and Kathy Leeball of the Human Rights Institute for nominating me. Thank you. We have wonderful leadership in both of them. I'd like to thank my family, my wife, Helene, and son Kai, and then another son, Thomas, who's not here. Thank you so much for being willing to move from England to stores. I'm not sure you knew what that would entail, but I appreciate that you were willing to come along for the ride. I was recruited to found the Human Rights Institute, an interdisciplinary institute on campus, and I received an enormous amount of support from the university, from the provost's office, from deans. A number of people were really important in that process, and I'll just mention a few of them. Dan Weiner, Jeremy Titlebaum, I saw him earlier, Gary English, Dick Brown. Katerina came on later, but was very much in the early phases. There are a number of people across the university that helped me build this institute that really tried to work across the schools. And the university's been very good to me, but it's also been willing to tolerate this interdisciplinary enterprise. Because human rights, like development studies or environmental studies, or women's studies, or a number of areas, is truly cross-disciplinary. It's a little bit of philosophy, a little bit of law, a little bit of history, a little bit of anthropology. And putting all that together in an undergraduate minor and major, and then our graduate programs, took a lot of, you know, moving around the pieces of the jigsaw. And the university was very supportive of that. I'd like to report, I've been here nearly 20 years, but the university has gotten even more interdisciplinary since then. I remember when I became a joint appointment at the Law School, the lawyers accepted me, but they sent a message to the provost's office saying, "He's the last one. After this, no more." This acceptance does not entail further acceptances. And I'm glad to report they've hired like three or four people since then to interdisciplinary positions. So there was a, we were the thin end of the wedge back then. It's really opened things up since then. And we were asked what were the highlights of our career, and I could only think, I could narrow it down to three. First of all, I got a very special award in 2011. I got the Best Daddy Award from my son Kai on Father's Day, which is still up on my wall. And then something that is really satisfying is when students get in touch and they say, "I was moved by your class, by your supervision. I've got a job now." Those are really satisfying connections. But also, you know, "I'm working from the UN in Mali." Or "I am, you know, following my passion in X, Y, or place around the world." That is always really, really satisfying. And I'm sure many of you will feel the same as educators. But then finally, kind of now more recently, towards the end of my career, you know, I used to do very scholarly, philosophical things. And now I'm getting really, really practical. And I feel that because in our nation, in our world, our house is really on fire. And I just can't muster my passion for another article in a flagship journal. I'm actually doing that, but I want to do other things as well. So I found it very satisfying to work locally, here in Connecticut. I chaired the State Advisory Committee to the U.S. Commission on Civil Rights. We worked on traffic stops, racial profiling traffic stops, and there was eventually legislation, which I don't take credit for, but I was certainly part of the conversation in bringing in legislation to compel police officers in Connecticut to give reasons for their traffic stops and to actually find a way of charting statistically the patterns of those stops to see if there's racial profiling going on. And then more recently, I've been appointed to this Hate Crimes Advisory Committee. I'm working with cops, and my law students give me stick for that, interestingly enough. But what we're working on is a statewide hate crimes investigative unit in the Connecticut State Police, a statewide policy. No other state has a hate crimes policy for law enforcement that is statewide. And then also mechanisms for reporting. And so I'm kind of working on that sort of thing right now, and I'm finding it really satisfying. I'm grateful that I'm in a university that permits that, that supports that, that I have a dean that's very supportive of that work, and UConn remains a wonderful place to work. So thank you all.
So I just have a few, three quick thoughts about that. One is, when that's what comes out of your mouth, who needs notes? Two is, Jeremy had a hoodie on. I saw him for a second, I'm not sure where he is. And the third one was, I saw your son before, and I literally had the thought, who's that good-looking version of Richard Wilson? But anyway. So this is a very exciting moment in our program. Our final awardee is Dr. Radenka Mark. Please come over, Radenka. As we all know, we're in the unique position to honor Dr. Mark, who is not only an incredibly valuable member of our academic institution, but also our interim president. She stepped into the role earlier this year and has been a champion of this university and its faculty for over 10 years. She's served extremely effectively as our vice president for research, innovation, and entrepreneurship at UConn and UConn Health. She is a world leader in technologies for clean energy and sustainability. Her work has significantly advanced our understanding of materials and catalysts, and she has developed innovative manufacturing processes involved in fuel cell technologies, storage materials, and electrochemical sensors for health applications, leading to higher-performance, commercially viable, clean energy systems. Under her leadership, our research awards at UConn and UConn Health have doubled, growing from 184 million in 2017 to 377 million in 2021. But I do want to say very clearly, she has been a vice president of research for the entire university, supporting the humanities, supporting professional schools. She truly has understood what it means to support every aspect of our research endeavor, and that now shows in her role as president. In addition to research, she is passionate about growing opportunities for students and colleagues. She's advanced interdisciplinary research in the [inaudible 0:32:20]. She's advanced interdisciplinary research in the humanities, arts and engineering, business, and she's done so by supporting the hiring of faculty in the Human Rights Institute and promoting the placement of students with startup companies in UConn's Technology Incubation Program and UConn Health's laboratories through the Partnership and Innovation and Education Program. She is truly an exemplar in creating and supporting new opportunities for UConn and our community, and I can't think of anyone who is truly more in love with being at UConn and who has truly been someone that has really aligned the entire university on what our mission is and what we are able to do. Thank you, Dr. Mark.
Oh, this does get worse. After rich, I'm also one who doesn't know what comes out of my mouth. So, but let me start with this, you know, my parents shared with me that first words that I said was not "Mom" and that somebody knocked on our door, and I said, "Who is it?" So that shows my curious nature. I came to UConn in 2010 because I truly wanted to go to the classroom and be faculty and be with young people, because I truly believe their future is in them. On my journey, I met many amazing people. I told my dad that I want to be a scientist and professional, and he says, "Honey, make sure you work harder twice than any man, and make sure you always have a mentor in life." And I says, "What, what do you mean by mentor? Who is mentor?" And he says, "Mentor is going to tell you when you are not doing well, and mentor is going to make sure you always stay humble and act with humility." So I always remember that. And I also want to thank, besides my parents, I want to thank my professor Shingo. When I was a student in Japan, I was only woman in School of Engineering, and they didn't know what to do with me. So my professor Shingo always says, "You are not changing diversity, but you are going to have impact." So I think of that impact. And for me, it was important to open the door and stand on the door and let other women to go in School of Engineering. Did diversity change? Yes, slightly, but not significant little level that I want to do. But while mentioning him, I graduated 28 years ago, and I checked this morning, since I graduated, I received 415 emails from him. And for me, mentor is for life. So when you find a good mentor, make sure you stay in touch. I want to acknowledge my husband and my children, who are here. And people talk about the successes, but I also want to talk about the failures. I wrote 100 grants as a professor at UConn. I got awarded 2080s had been failure, but every night, my husband was making sure that the fire is on, that I can write and prepare my lectures. So I'm grateful for all your love and support, and I truly believe in the amazing faculty and students. I send my three children to UConn, they graduated from UConn, one of them is still at UConn, and the reason that they are at UConn is because we have the best faculties. I don't want them to go to MIT, I don't want to go to Harvard, because the faculty that work at UConn are the top quality. And I want to acknowledge all the staff that helped me to be successful at UConn. Without their support, Michelle Williams and many others, Bettany Javiti, I will not stand in front of you, because I'm not superwoman, I'm just ordinary vermin that works hard. And they supported me. So thank you all for making UConn a community. Thank you all for bringing success. And I also want to acknowledge people that nominated but didn't get this award deserve as many, as much as any of five of us. So we have many more brilliant people, and we have to celebrate them every day. And without our students like Justin and many others who are here to support us, we will not be successful. So we are here because of you. Thank you all for making us good, and we are going to be better. Thank you. By the way, I just forgotten to say something. Kazim Kazirunian is at the end of the line, and he looked much younger when I was recruited as a faculty, and all that gray hair he got because of me being his faculty. So thank you all.
So this brings us to the end of our program, but before everyone goes, we'd like to gather all the current Board of Trustees, distinguished professors for a photo on the stairs happening now. Thank you, everyone, for being here, and please have a good rest of the event.